Planning Committee, but I always like to remind people at certain historical dates, what those dates are. Today is December 7th. And I understand that there are only going to be two actual survivors at the memorial today in Hawaii. So our reward, two veterans, there are very few left of them. So just for those of you who are younger here, reflect upon what your, maybe your grandfather and your great grandfather's generation did. So, okay, trustee Kushman.
That was less than that. Thank you. So I will kick off the education planning committee meeting this December 7th, 2022, at 4:30. It's turned 4:31. And open with the review of the November 2nd meeting minutes. It's easy for me to say. Are there any, does anybody identify anything that needs adjustment or change in those events? Seeing none, move on. Dr. Urbatus will be in room for report update, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. So fall has come to an end in terms of enrollment reporting. And the data that was in your packet has not changed from November 21st to November 28th. So we saw an overall enrollment in terms of headcount, we were down 1.1% and FTEs were down 3.9%. So I'm going to ask if you have questions about that, and then I'm going to provide an update on winter and spring.
Any questions?
Okay, so winter, as of this past Friday, is headcount is up 8.1%. And credit hours are up 6.3%. And winter session will begin immediately following the Christmas holiday, so on the 27th of December.
Questions?
Okay, on to spring. So first spring report as of this past Friday, at the present time, our headcount enrollment is down 3.6%, and our FTEs are down 5.4%. We have several weeks to go before the start of the spring semester on January 23rd, so stay tuned. Any questions?
This is all really-
This is from your packet.
Right.
This is not in your packet. Winter and spring are not in your packet.
Thank you. So this is really just the changing demographics in the country. Coming roofs onto us as far as declining.
I would say yes, particularly high school graduation numbers are flat and/or declining. The economy is slowing to some extent, which may or may not be good in the long run. We shall see. But also particularly for spring, we, this is just the first report for spring, so I wouldn't read anything into it at this point. Numbers could go up, or they could also decline further.
Thank you. Any other-
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to soon success update. Sarah's?
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Sarah and I are going to tag team a very serious topic of violence in schools and mental health, and we wanted to just give a, an overview of what it is that we do here at Finger Lakes. I did realize that the NABIDA threat assessment in your packet was very tiny, and so we made a copy, so you might be able to follow along a little bit more in paper. Real quick, violence really is divided into two areas. Okay, two areas, threat to self, threat to harm to others, and harm to self. And I'm going to talk quickly about harm to others. It's an area that we don't see as much here. Okay, we're working on. It's an area that we don't see thankfully as much here on campus, harm to others, but it is something that happens occasionally. Sorry, I'm really out of whack here. Before I go too much further in your packet, okay, it's not working. In your packet, the, we want to start with a definition of mental health, because I think it's important that we just frame for just a second what mental health is. We hear a lot about it, we think about it, but mental health, as it relates to this topic, is really how we think, feel, and act, and it determines how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. So when you think about a college student and what goes on in their lives, their mental health and being healthy is very important, because it's a very stressful environment, as you can imagine. To that end, in our community, harm to others, if we do hear about it, it's usually not imminent. If it were imminent, our friends in campus police are probably the first people that are responding to it. But very often, we hear about things afterwards through our radar reporting, through the newspaper or social media, we can get headlines occasionally, and we will react to that, and/or through someone alerting us, just emailing us, etc. Oh, perfect. So we will often interim suspend the student who has talked about harm to self, or excuse me, harm to others, excuse me, gives us time to process what's happening, gives us time to collect data, and gives us time to work with other agencies, our campus police, housing, etc., to figure out what's going on, what is the threat assessment using the NABIDA tool as well as other resources, to really determine, is that student safe to be on our campus? And that is not just for us, but is the student's safety as well. The next slide, because when Sarah and I were talking about it, we said we probably should give some examples of what we actually have dealt with on this campus related to students and harm to others. And so these examples, while very infrequent, are actual cases that we worked with in the last four years. It's, and a couple of them, there may have been multiples. So with that said, again, why now? Well, because mental health, as we talked about, is imperative to a healthy student, and 2/3 of mental health crises often come before a student or individual turns 23. Add in the pandemic, and we all know what's going on there, but add in the pandemic and what that has done in heightened anxiety, in heightened depression, in heightened awareness. The, the National Health is saying that we have 10 years of reverberation from the crisis. We will be dealing with people who have been in the crisis and adversely affected for up to 10 years. Domestic violence has, is on the rise, the silent second crisis wave is what they're calling it, and they're talking about this domestic violence and this could lead to an economic and social crisis as the next horizon because of what's happened in the pandemic. And so threat to others, as I said, as I said, is small. I wanted most of this presentation to be something about harm to self and threat to self, and that's really where Sarah deals every day, and so Sarah, take it. So on the next slide, it'll show information for you that is, that was collected for our students who have just come in to our new students, right? And you'll see, I'm not going to read all the data, but you'll see that our students are coming to us already with significant issues within their background, mental health issues, mental health concerns, on top of that, sort of the other type of concerns that are happening with them. So the, the social concerns, the family concerns, the economic concerns, the not having enough food, so food insecurity. I know housing insecurity is one that my office works with a lot. It may not have been one of the top numbers, but that is also one of them. The last line of the slide, though, I think is one that is important to look at, too, is that on top of school, whether that's part-time or full-time, on top of all of those things up there, the students are working a lot, right, outside of what they're doing for class. And that's outside of, typically outside of the campus, so not necessarily a campus job. So all of those things and trying to be students. So next slide. So this is, gives you an idea of sort of what happens on campus, and our community is the FLCT community. So we often will see more threats of violence to harm themselves. The ways that we find out are some of the ways that Sarah already said. So we get reports, campus police gets reports, we have the radar system. For those of you who don't know, it's a system in which anyone can submit a report that goes directly to my office and other members within my office to evaluate it. It could be issues that come up from depression, anxiety, issues at home, food insecurity, all, any type of thing that students can send, faculty staff can send that to us, and we will then respond appropriately to it. So those things, we have many ways in which students and people can send information to us about students of concern. Once we receive the information, what our office does is, just to kind of walk you through it, we'll review it, identify if the student has worked with it, familiar with anyone within our office, and that if they have a previous relationship, which is important to establish with the student. And then whoever is the most appropriate person will work with that student and give them the resources. If we don't have the resources, we'll provide those resources and to them outside in the community, always refer them to timely care as well. We've been doing that throughout the course of the past year and a half. So that follow-up usually happens within 24 to 48 hours for students. And after that, we will do continue follow-up with the student. We'll notify the student, reach out to student, try and touch base, have them meet with us, whether it's virtual or in-person, and then do follow-up, continued follow-up with that student, and make sure that those other resources, and they're getting access to those other resources, which could be a variety of things. And anyone in which, we also will communicate to other people within the college community if there's information that they need to know about the students. So sometimes that is communicated with faculty, that a student is going to be in class for a significant amount of time because of an issue or incident that came up, those types of things. And it's all coordinated, again, through the Center for Student Well-Being, whether it's a counseling staff or health services staff, and then again, working with other partners in the community. We go to the next slide. So this is going to give you some examples of things that are sort of harm to self and things that we've seen on campus for our students. So any attempted suicide, suicide ideation, and that is a very vague statement, suicide ideation. It could be anything from, I don't want to be here anymore. So understanding that it's not necessarily someone saying, I want to commit suicide, it's, has a lot of different, there's a lot behind that. And so those are all things that we're looking at in all the different reports that we receive to sort of identify and work with the students. So students depriving themselves of food, lack of eating, misuse of any types of substances, whether the prescription medications, self-cutting and self-medicating alcohol and other drugs. And so we've seen a lot of that. Any type of those things, we'll do care for them as well, follow-up care with them. What's next? So this gives you some data from August until just the end of November, as to the number of appointments and times that students have been within our space or within timely care to take advantage of the resources that are available to them. It is a significant number of students that are coming in to see us and that are utilizing timely care. And we continue to see that, we're at the end of the semester, we're continuing to see that now as well. So it has not slowed down, and we're doing the best in that we can every day. Question?
This is, George, just, the scope of this is huge. We can talk about, sorry. Is there anything, are we looking at the K-12 system around us to see, I don't, is there, they're experiencing it too? Is there any alignment there or anything we're leveraging from them that we, helps us inform us as to what's coming or what to, how to handle some of this?
Great question. And actually, Matt McGrath and I recently communicated, putting together a team of, I don't remember the acronym, I apologize, but of local folks who deal with things in the K-12, but also within our community, to see what overlap and what are they seeing in the K-12. So that's something that I know Matt reached out to me about, and so that's going to be getting put together. Yes. I also think families and students, as you saw, are very aware of self-identifying. So they come to us and they talk to us before they arrive, many of them, but a lot of them will self-identify early. So we are aware, we can have some systems in place, we can monitor what's going on.
Another activity, just last week, Center Helming held a forum here for a number of our folks, were there, Jenny Earl and some folks were there. So there's already some connections being built as well. But what's good about what Sarah and Matt are doing is a little bit focused on the direct connections between us and the high schools. We've also seen the Student Association, the work you're doing and how all this is also embedded in Eric and the activists they're doing. So honestly, kudos, everybody for that. Move on to resolutions. Cassie. You've got several to work through.
Good evening. I have several resolutions before you. The first one is the microprudential policy. Secondly, does anyone have any questions on that?
Well, just generally with you, seeing the timeframe of that being-
If the resolution is passed tonight, we are anticipating that there will be approximately seven microprudentials available for students no later than the fall semester.
It takes a while to get those.
Yes.
Questions from Christine's?
And the second resolution before you is the reappointment of 12 faculty members where their second through fifth probationary years. Their names are before you. They continue to do good work for us. Any questions on that? Highlight of the evening is granting tenure to six faculty members, three of whom are in here at the moment, John Bateman, Jessica Brinza, and Paula Knight. The granting of tenure is the culmination of five or more years during which our newest faculty members are assessed in a variety of areas. However, of utmost importance is their performance as educators inside the classroom. It is incumbent upon the college to ensure that these faculty will provide the highest level of education to our students for years to come. The faculty I'm recommending for tenure this evening are highly skilled educators and will represent the college well as a route towards the future. The first faculty member is John Bateman from the Conservation Department. John is an instructor whose classroom is described as a hands-on, interactive, and wonderful, engaging learning environment for students. Additionally, John's instruction is described as allowing students to struggle just a little bit, and encouraging them when they find the answers themselves, which leads to a higher level of learning and motivation. This teaching style builds perseverance. Every challenge is treated as an opportunity for growth and a vehicle for critical thinking and practice. Renee Campbell from the Social Science Department. Renee brings real-world examples into her classroom to promote discussion and critical thinking. She asks challenging questions to gauge students' understandings of topics, but does so in an environment where students are comfortable in making mistakes. She employs collaborative learning in the classroom to allow students to learn from each other in a way that a lecture alone cannot do. Sean Canali, Conservation. Sean is a seasoned professional and extremely effective teacher and classroom leader. His strong rapport with students combined with his positive, energetic attitude creates a strong learning environment. Armed with a strong lesson plan and efficiently using class time, Sean's effort actively includes students in the proceedings, as well as his full mastery of the course material, keeps students highly engaged throughout the class. Paula Knight. Paula's experience, business department, I'm sorry. Paula's experience and knowledge of the hospitality industry creates interesting and engaging classroom. One of Paula's strengths is her ability to allow students to take ownership of a classroom discussion. Paula is eager to hear the students' stories relating to their experience and the topics at hand, and the students are eager to share. The sharing often leads to other students jumping in with example, and allows a good balance between the online and in-person student engagement. Carrie Kruger, Computing Science Department. Carrie began as a high school teacher and quickly involved into a college professor. Her online courses are described as organized, easy to follow, and cleanly laid out for her students. This is true of her carefully-plotted course outlines, as well as the information within each instructional unit. It is all presented in clear language with well-spelled-out objectives, including anticipated learning outcomes. Carrie usefully incorporates tools such as short video lectures and voice thread activities. All of these features are neatly folded into effectively-designed modules, each with requisite information for guiding students toward completion of their assignments. Classroom assignments form from videos and presentations and book readings, and tie it all together while students, while asking students to think about and apply the material into your own lives. And finally, Jessica Brinza. Jess, Jessica, she's from the Health Science and Human Performance Department. Jessica's experience and knowledge of the healthcare industry is evident as she instructs her students. Her classes are very organized and their objectives are clear. Jessica is highly engaged in mastering, interacting with students, creating an ongoing discussion throughout the course. She is intuitive, the general case of the class, and takes time to make sure that everyone follows the topic. Jessica uses multimedia interclasses, which are creating engaging lessons, and they act as a launching pad for further discussion. All of the aforementioned faculty are also valued contributors to their departments in the colleges whole, and we are fortunate to have them as members of our back. Any questions?
Sit the three of them here.
Yes, could you all please stand up? John Bateman, Jessica Brinza, and Paula Knight.
Trustee Kushman can also, Professor Bateman brought his son, a student here as well. So, welcome. Future, future professor.
There is one final resolution in your packet. It is for denial of tenure for your review action. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Kelly, enter. Trustee on there?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
In your packet, we have a resolution requesting to add three new titles to our professional roster of titles. The first one is an academic specialist. This is a new title that's being created, but it's not a new headcount or position. There previously was a senior clerk in the online learning department, and to better address the needs of that department, we are creating a job description that will be more specific to the academic role of that position. So it would be re-categorized within the same bargaining unit and within CFCI, but it'll be a paraprofessional position. And then we have two more titles that are being created through strategic plan grant funds. As you'll probably recall, in September, some of the COVID stimulus funds were authorized to the president to invest in strategic initiatives. And these two titles are being created using those funds. One is an assistant director for student success, and the other is a student success coach. So understanding that these are one-time monies being designated to fund these positions, we anticipate them to be funded for the next couple of the academic years and thereafter. Another funding plan would need to be identified in order to continue these positions. They're not currently in the operating budget. Are there any questions about these titles?
Questions from Christine. Yes.
Knowing that these two positions do not have sustainable funding, moving forward, do you expect it to be challenging to fill these positions?
I mean, if prospective applicants for them understand that there's temporary funding?
Yes.
It's something that we always want to be transparent with people about when they're recruiting for those positions, to let them know that it is grant-funded. I would ask if Cassie or Ken have any additional details that they would want to share about, you know, what may come after those initial couple of years, because those details, we would also want to try to project for people coming into the position, so they know what to expect and that is fair. Thank you.
I've got a thought. Part of this was that in terms of, you can prove that you're bringing more students, keeping the retention numbers for the students, and it demonstrates a real-world current. And Ken, do you want to get put on the spot? Jeff, did you want to quiz him on, what's the cost, or what is the revenue for a student, one semester?
Incremental revenue per student for a semester is about $1,500. We lose a student, we lose good management, and a student will be good. So, so obviously, they all know how value, how value goes. That's sort of like the incremental cost for it came from all.
So multiply that by two, or each time you keep a student's semester, you could do them add, how many students do we need to do better to justify having the positions?
Other question? Thank you.
On to the strategic presentation, Dr. Woodlock.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you again. So it's that time of year again when we send you a whole lot of numbers all at one time, and then we're only going to talk about a few of them here in the PowerPoint, focusing in on a few key trends around enrollment and a couple of key trends in our strategic plan. Remembering that our big update on the strategic plan is always in the spring, because there's only a few metrics that we can actually update in the fall. We need that full year. So just a couple of updates on the strategic plan, and we'll return to that. So overall, let's take a look at- Overall, while we wait for that, a couple of interesting things going on in enrollment. But I would say, one of the key things that we still see, and you're going to hear me say like one too many times, is impact slash response from the COVID-19 pandemic and some continuation of trends that we've seen, as opposed to some brand-new lightning bolt trend that, that we've never seen before. So- So the big piece here we start with is looking at the headcount and full-time equivalent, FTE, which are slightly different calculations, both of which are important for understanding. And I think this graphic, which you have different versions of in your packet, is actually fairly helpful when we look back from 2018 now. We see a decline, but we don't see a freefall. And I think graphically that that's an important thing to point out here. And one of the things that we know when we benchmark against our peers is when we look at our peer institutions, there's been a lot of freefall. So we're in an environment where there's a decline in enrollment fairly steadily across the United States and particularly in the Northeast. But the sort of more stable slope that we see there is actually indicative of health as opposed to something that I think we need to be panicking about. And that's an important piece, and it's also why sometimes visuals can be really helpful because while we want to see the actual numbers, actually seeing it visually can help us understand numbers in a different way. So overall, this report always looks at this fall versus last fall. That's its main comparison, and then as appropriate, we add in other years when we can or if we need to to make a point. So when we look at the comparison to fall '21, we see a decline, a headcount decline of 1.3% and an FTE decline of 4.3%. This is a trend that we talked about last year for the first time, and you're going to hear me talk about a couple more times on a couple of more slides. What does that mean? It means that we have a shift in terms of full-time to part-time, and sometimes not even full-time to part-time, but within the part-time category of students taking fewer credit hours. FTE is calculated based on credit hours, whereas headcount is headcount, right? Why are both important? Because you need resources in different ways. FTE is what our budget is calculated off of, it's how our aid is calculated, so our sort of lights stay on. But if your students are taking fewer classes, but there's still X number of them, there are certain resources that they still need regardless of whether or not they're taking fewer courses. So understanding that shift is particularly important when we're talking about strategy and stewardship, both of the budget and of student success and the institution. So we're going to return to that theme in a couple of other slides, seeing where that plays out. Couple of other things just to note on this slide here. This idea of headcount and FTE plays out interestingly when we look at the Gemini comparison. So Gemini, we have a headcount increase but an FTE decline. So more students taking fewer classes in Gemini. That's just sort of interesting, and it may also just be a particular anomaly in that data this year. Interesting though. And then overall, that main idea we want to take away from here is the overall decline since 2018 is not a freefall, and we see this shift to taking fewer courses that has been more profound during the COVID epidemic. So we want to keep an eye on that. Is that something that is COVID and environmental? Is that a trend that will continue? And it's honestly a little bit too early to decide. Next slide, please. All right, so you heard me say when we benchmark. Now, this is the benchmark data that's been released by SUNY and very pretty. And my team does a good job of making it prettier, so I always appreciate that. And it is helpful. It's always helpful to benchmark yourself against your peers. One of the problems, though, that I have with this particular benchmark data, which we will see ad nauseam and ad infinitum for the next year because it's the only one SUNY gives out, it's the only benchmark that SUNY does, is they compare only to the previous year always. So in this particular case, you might recall that I just said, when we compare ourselves to our peers, we're really doing quite well. And you might also recall this exact same graphic from last year, Finger Lakes was higher up. So you might say, oh, wait, what does that mean? You know, why is it that our ranking has fallen? So I want to just sort of tease that apart just a little bit. When we look at some of our biggest folks above us, Schenectady, Ulster, Herkimer, Fulton Montgomery, really sort of with the exception of Hudson Valley and Mohawk Valley, those are colleges that were in absolute freefall last year. So their numbers were so low last year that when they run the statistic of comparison, it actually throws it out of whack. So why am I spending all this time telling you this? Well, one is because these are the data that are out there all the time. So if we don't have a conversation about this context and you get asked about it, then you don't know the answer to that. Overall, our actual enrollment, when we go back to that slope that I was showing you and when we go back to our overall comparison with our peers, we're really pretty much at the very top in terms of how we came through the pandemic and maintaining our enrollment. But it's still important to understand how it's going to be represented. And when we look at the comparison year to year, some of our peers have recovered a little bit, and that's good because it's good for the system and it's good for the sector, but it's not necessarily a fully truthful or fully holistic picture of what's actually happening on the top of that paper base. Okay, let's go on to the next slide, please. Okay, so a couple of things here that relate to what we talked about with FTE, and that is that our part-time enrollment population is larger than our full-time. So anytime you're going to have a larger part-time, and as our part-time enrollment population increases, those are students who are by definition taking fewer credit hours. So that's part of this shift. It's a shift from full-time to part-time. That isn't necessarily always just the case. It can also be within the part-time category, but that overall shift is one that we see here numerically. And then the other thing that I think is important to point out is that our growth in SUNY Online and our growth in out-of-state, which is generally students who are taking online courses, not always SUNY Online, but the online modality, right, has grown, right? So we see that as an area of strength. Obviously, given some of the shifts in SUNY Online, it's an area of sort of strategically we need to be understanding and investing in. But this shift in modality remains real and true. Is that all COVID impact? I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you how much of a shift back to face-to-face we will fully see. I do not think we will return to full face-to-face because I think the sector is experiencing a shift to more flexible modality. But we definitely see evidence of that here. It's just way too soon from pandemic influence to know how much of this is pandemic versus forever. And I think we still have some shifting that will happen as people work through what the best learning way for them is. Okay, let's move on. Okay, a couple of key highlights that I'd like to talk about here. Our student body has gotten and is getting more diverse. I have told you that every single time I've come to give you this presentation, and that continues to be the case. We are now about 24% student of color, so that's a broader category involving both race and ethnicity. We have about 9% of our students identify as Hispanic, which is an ethnicity, so it's a slightly different statistical category. That, we have not seen much change in within that overall student of color category, but the student of color category broadly is one that has gone up over the last 10 years, five years, and each respective year. It was a little bit more stable during the height of the pandemic. We also continue to have growth in the number of students registering with a disability. 12% this fall, actually the highest percentage that is on record since we started cataloging these. And you're going to hear me say what I say to you every time when I talk about this statistic. That only counts the students who officially register their disability with our Office of Disabilities. It is a highly under-reported statistic. So when we talk about 12% of our students registering with a disability, knowing that there are many, many more students who have a disability but are not registering them, that gives you a sense of when we're talking about student need and student success. And one of those reasons why when we talk about headcount versus FTE, FTE may determine the budget, it doesn't necessarily determine student need. Students, even a fewer number of students, can actually buy their population and who they are, have a greater need. And overall, that's what we're beginning to see and have been seeing for a little while, even pre-pandemic, but it's heightening now as we've moved through the pandemic. Our first-generation numbers are about the same. Pell, our Pell students, Pell recipients, a little bit lower than our average over the five years, but about the same. And the reason I point those out is those are two categories that generally recognize higher need for those students, right? 50% of our students are coming in Pell-eligible. That means they're coming in at the lowest income level to be eligible for the highest level of student aid. So again, who are our students, what kind of need they have, isn't necessarily determined by how many credits they take. And we also see a shift in age distribution. This is a murkier picture right now. That high school picture continues to decline. I'm not talking about Gemini, I'm talking about our matriculated students here. And we know that, and we know what those demographics are, and we know that those numbers will likely continue to shift downwards because there are simply fewer of them. We've seen a very slight decrease just this last year in the number of students over 34. That may be because some of them are returning to work in the pandemic, not sure yet. We need to look at that. And a bit of an increase in that older student population of 24 to 34. So it's an area we need to continue to look at, but overall, our average age has shifted up, and that's the third year in a row that we're talking about, that age distribution looking different. And again, students who are non-traditional tend to have different needs, if not sometimes more direct needs around learning. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay, so one of the things that I just really want to briefly touch on and not heavily get into today is that sometimes these categories intersect. So when we talk about student need and we talk about student success, one of the things that our data are showing is that there's an intersection in particular with Pell eligibility and students of color. So students of color are much more likely to come in as Pell-eligible. That does not make us really different than most other institutions, especially community colleges. But when we look at that intersection, it's another way of examining student need. So as our Pell numbers have gone up and as our student of color numbers have gone up, it paints another picture of need. And understanding intersection is another important part of understanding how we need to craft student services to maximize student success. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay, so another area that we looked at this time around in our enrollment report was to look at SUNY Online and the growth of students taking courses in SUNY Online. Also, just understanding where those students are coming from. I think this is an interesting graphic. Obviously, the majority of them are coming from New York, but we have some, you know, interesting dots here and there. And then if you look specifically in at that sub-map there at the New York City area, we do have a lot of students, 23% of our SUNY Online students are coming from the broad-stroke New York City area there, but 83% are not. So it's not as if it's all the students, but it's a significant number of the students. And this statistic, I think, is interesting. We've had a steady increase of the number of students taking at least one SUNY Online course. That's not necessarily that they're only enrolled in a SUNY Online. They may be a FLCC psychology major taking a SUNY Online course, but that number has gone in 2020 from 2026 to 539 of our students are taking one of the courses affiliated with SUNY Online. That in general speaks to modality, and I think it also broadly speaks to the fact that through SUNY Online, we expanded our online offerings much more so even prior to the pandemic than a lot of other schools did. So our students, even those who are not enrolled in a SUNY Online course, have more opportunity to take courses that were developed as part of SUNY Online. But again, given some of the strategic conversations we're having, it's an important metric to have a sense of, and also to notice student choice. Students are choosing certain modalities in certain ways. Okay, let's go on to the next slide. All right, a couple of key takeaways. I've really talked about most of these already. But I do think that as we walk away from thinking about what is this going to mean? What does this mean for our next strategic plan? That this interplay between student need and investing in student success really does beg of us to understand the complexity of the student story, and we see that in these enrollment numbers and we see that in these enrollment trends already. There's not a super simple way of just sort of saying it's this or it's this. There's a lot of complexity and nuance in the data and in the student story, and that requires us to think in more complex ways about developing student services. Okay, so, any questions? Couple more slides. So we have just a couple of items from our strategic plan to update, and that is our completion, our persistence rate, which is looking at how many students graduates, essentially a graduation metric. We always look at that in three tiers, right? 100% of the time, 150% of the time, and 200% of the time, acknowledging that the vast majority of our students do not come here with the intention of graduating in 100% of the time. That is made even more clear when you look at how many of our students are part-time students, right? So even 150 or 200% of the time, if you're only taking two courses a semester, becomes not particularly realistic. Overall, we see a slight decline in our fall 2020 or '19 or '18, depending which we're looking at, which we would expect with the pandemic, but not a freefall. So overall, about where we would expect given the metrics we saw during the pandemic. Next slide, please. This one, I think, is really pretty interesting. We look at course completion in our strategic plan, so we ran our course completion numbers. So in fall '21 compared to the previous fall, where we were in the height of the pandemic, we have recovered in our course completion rate. So that means the overall, 63% being the average here between new and transfer students, are completing their courses successfully, so C or above. So that is a positive, that fall '20 is looking more like an anomaly, and that's a good sign that we're on the right track in terms of pandemic recovery. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, and retention is another one that we look at in our strategic plan from a fall-to-fall perspective. And our overall retention went slightly up, inching up from pandemic recovery as well. And we're back going towards our average. And obviously, our intention is we want to get over and above our average, but we need to move back towards the average that we slipped down under during the pandemic. So we made some progress on that. Next slide. So, that might have been record time. I don't know. I'm looking to him. Any questions I can entertain? I know it's a lot of data and it's a lot to go over, and we can always talk about it again at some other point if a question comes up.
What I'd recommend to you, basically what Deborah said, is a real deep dive in the next.
Okay. Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, and second, I'll say that.
Okay, then I will turn over the Finance Committee to Chairman Morgan.
Thank you. Chair, I appreciate that. It's by the order of the December 7th meeting of the Facilities and Finance Committee. A review of our number of minutes. Questions, comments? Thanks, Chad, Penny. Let's move right to our operating budget and our CFO, Ken. You might take this through the expense and revenue budget projections.
Okay, that slide. I'd say the status is really unchanged from last month as you kind of expect. Remember last month, we had a little blip in the three, uh, three payroll period that showed it. Our expenses spiked up a little bit, but that's been normalized. And we're continuing to see, um, revenues holding where we expected. We did budget for us by declining revenue. And that's where we are, we're a little bit below, but, um, uh, but, but as you can see, we, uh, we, I'm going to go to the bottom line. You know, that fund balance decrease of one point eight, you know, or one point seven, is was our budget for the year, and we're not going to have that, uh, loss for the year. What's holding us up? What is supporting our, uh, bottom line will be, uh, delayed hiring and benefits, um, expenses, budget, low budget. I'm still, I'm still at the eight hundred thousand dollar loss for the year, but I'm expecting a loss, but nowhere's near this. And that's kind of where I'm, I'm, I'm still coming out. We, we're seeing some strength in revenue. It's a little early in the year, it's only two months. We're seeing a little strength in revenue. And the expenses are holding in line with last year's expenses. It's a little better than last year's expenses and some strength in revenue. So, um, that's all looking good. The real question in my mind is we know that we're firing back. Uh, we know that we, that, that some of those benefits that we had from last year, we're not going to, financial benefits, we're not going to have this year. But, um, we anticipate some of those. So, uh, more to follow, but we are basically, I believe, online for half, uh, you know, half of that, well, for a six hundred thousand dollar loss, eight hundred thousand dollars loss for this year, not the one point. Okay, so we'll talk about facilities update very briefly. Kathy's not here tonight because her, her update was, um, so short. I just want to mention that the master plan, um, they kicked off the master plan at the end of November. And they, uh, they talked through some of the, they've left with the team, they talked through sort of the, uh, the plan, the process. They're going to be presenting their master plan to the steering committee on December nineteenth. So a little two weeks from now is when they're going to be outlining the plan to develop the plan. So they had an investigation, they brought their full team in, they, they did some preliminary investigation out there, just so they could get things organized. So they're getting organized. A couple of other things that Kathy's working on right now, uh, satellite campus costs. We asked her to take a look at some of the operating expenses, move deeper into some of the satellite campuses. Not saying that there's anything out of line there, but just to get a better understanding or full understanding of some of those items there, like snow problem, some of the operating expenses that we're paying for, just to see where we can potentially, uh, help the landlord, uh, reduce some of our operating expenses. So now she's doing some investigation there, some of those, some of those areas. And then on the Newark campus, we're working with the Department of Labor, um, pretty much, uh, carry on back to look at possible sublet within Newark campus. We've got some extra space there. We can't get out of the lease for another three years, but Department of Labor may be interested in partnering with us out there. Um, and we're exploring that opportunity right now. So hopefully that'll come to fruition, be a win-win programm- programmatically speaking, as well as financially speaking.
We would co- locate Department of Labor's Career Center in the Newark Center to serve Wayne County.
Operation would be great to have our students exposed to that, you know, off, off, off those. It was a very, uh, thought process, uh, saw it on our recent meeting, a very complicated process to get the Department of Labor and law and us to all kind of work through the mechanics there. Those are some additional details.
That's true, but does New York's Department of Labor currently have a location in Wayne County?
They did in lines and they lost their lease. And they are currently, um, located in the Geneva DOL Career Center, which is very cramped as a result of them moving in. Um, so they are eager to get out of there and reestablish their own presence in Wayne County. They looked at a few locations and felt that the Newark Center would best meet their needs. I think there is an opportunity here, uh, to foster expanded awareness, um, not only of our credit programs, but also workforce offerings for their clients. So I'm excited about it. If we can just get through the minutia within New York State Office of General Services, that we are working with. It's truly a bureaucratic process.
But, uh, thank you. Final questions? Thank you, Ken. Welcome up, uh, Anthony Graff. Uh, talk about our first read and it can't be, have the safety proposal. Podium, floor is yours, welcome.
Good evening. Um, I have the first reading for the resolution for the purchase of two patrol rifles for the Campus Police Department at Bigger Lakes Community College. Total estimated cost of purchase of two rifles and related equipment is not to exceed six thousand five hundred dollars. We believe we have a packet, it's something in your packet which included an information, implementation plan, as well as a spreadsheet showing the costs in general. Uh, head with me Officer Lawson, he helped develop the plan and put some work into the research that we put before you. So I would like to know if you have any questions for us, if we can help you.
Do you want to hit some highlights of the plan?
Sure. So the, the plan would, it would add, um, two rifles to the program. One would be secured in our office in a safe, under surveillance by video camera, as well as locked in a separate office. So it's a, uh, very secure area. One rifle would be carried by a patrol officer who's on patrol, but only secured in the vehicle. In other words, this is not being carried around the campus. You won't see these, um, you will only see these if we need them and then we're going to lock them. We're going to have training program. Officer Lawson is a firearms instructor, a rifle instructor. We would have a training program that is in line with the Department of Criminal Justice, um, in line with all the other departments in our area. This would include, uh, all types of training to be familiar with that rifle and including annual training as well, sometimes by any training. Are there any other highlights you could think of that I'm missing? We, we've outlined some of, uh, cases that have happened over the years that show, sort of show why we would look to have this, the justification for it, the benefits of the program, um, and some of the other community colleges in our state that have the program, as well as all the SUNY departments that have, uh, this program.
Question, question, trustees. Do you have time, anything you might want to add?
Well, one key thing, and we talked about this last time, is that just because of some of the sensitivity, that this was, it was going to be a per free to allow for any other public comment, so that, uh, there's at least a time period when various constituencies look at it. Do a final vote on this, uh, on January fourth, uh, to go through it. So at least there's some time for public comment. And I, I do fully support it, it took a while, but, uh, Matt and his team, uh, did a good job of, of helping to convince things. And then also the environment is changing so rapidly and there are so many different, uh, threats that are out there. And then finally, it came down to folks like you, uh, that have to go to the sound of the guns and have the right equipment to help take care of people in this campus.
For those of you that were on the board when we first discussed arming our police officers, uh, player a few years ago, it was a very lengthy discussion, uh, it came up several times. The feeling at that time was this is not going to be an armed camp kind of thing. Um, unfortunately, as you said, um, developments started that need us realize that we had to have our officers armed. Uh, we hit, we have procedures in place where they make sure they've taken the proper training and, and all of that. And with more recent during mass shootings, um, all the evidence indicates that want to, um, respond as quickly as possible with as much firepower as possible because normally these people have very heavy equipment themselves. So thus, taking your recommendation and Rob's, uh, this is why we brought a team tonight, having these rifles on campus. It's, it's with a heavy heart I say this, but, um, you know, it, it's probably a practical thing.
I, I have a few.
Steve, all right, just go ahead and put your question. I understand this, the need for urgency and to stop the kill. What about stopping the dying? Is there, do we have a plan, are there adequate bleed kits distributed around campus where the people who are unfortunately hit, we can take care of that as well?
Excellent. Um, so currently, every officer that's deployed on duty has a night back, a tourniquet, a stop and bleed kit with them. Um, and as part of our deployment plan for this, um, took a real deep dive. We did a lot of training with Department of Homeland Security and RISNI. Not only an initial response, but the follow-on response to active shooter, that's the incident. And part of that is, um, early stage, um, tech med, medical stuff, packing wounds, applying tourniquets, the entryaging medical needs. So that, that's part of the plan is to, um, determine when this gets approved, would be to outfit and send with the officers a go bag, if you will, um, which would have a more advanced first aid kit. So that maybe not the officers that have engaged, but the follow-on officers as well can, um, respond with some adequate medical, um, just to stop the bleeding for people.
Other question, so I see. So I just had a few. I noticed that, um, four years ago, we had an exercise right on campus. And, um, as Dr. Nye said, and certainly know there's a lot that's happened. Is there another exercise planned or in the future in terms of, uh, anything to mark down, be done right here on campus?
Yes, I, I've been talking to Dr. Nye about that. We're looking to do one, we just haven't scheduled it yet. Um, I'm fairly new in the position still, so I'm still trying to see when that would be the best time. We're hoping to get one done in twenty twenty-three. Uh, I, I don't know if it'll be the large scale that you saw, but we do want to do an exercise in some way, including local law enforcement for sure and some of our other partners.
So during that exercise, was response time, uh, so talked about investigating from, let's say, the troopers or the sheriff or city police or others?
During that.
Did that exercise show?
During that, I wasn't there for that. And I know Brandon could speak to this more, but I do know the recommendation from that, uh, exercise was, one of the things was these patrol rifles added to our program to have a quicker response time with that tool.
Yeah, so I couldn't, and I'm not going to speak to a specific minutes time, but, um, knowing that, that, that maximum we may have by sheriff's deputies in the county, some may be responding as far as fifteen minutes away. To speak to that, we actually were fortunate enough to have Secret Service, um, breaking out school violence, K through twelve in, um, in colleges as well. Um, they said eighty, I believe it's eighty-one percent of incidences occur in five minutes or less. Um, so to, to answer your question, even if they're right around the corner, five minutes, it's a pretty short window of time for them to get here to deploy it and get on campus to actively respond. Ours is a minute.
And appreciate the research and the proposal. I noticed a couple of our neighboring community colleges, MCC and GCC, have not gone this route. Just curious as to why?
You know, I can't tell you why. Um, I know that MCC had researched it, they had it on the table. They have a new, uh, new, uh, director, interim director, and, uh, I believe he didn't choose to take that on right now as an interim. I don't know why. Um, as far as GCC, by knowledge of that colleges, they are not fully armed. All their officers are not even armed with handguns at this point. So for them to jump from not being armed to rifles would be a big jump for them, they would have to take the next step.
You also outlined a number of the benefits of this proposal. What, what are some of the downsides, some of the negatives?
You know, the, the only negatives from, that I can see from the public point of view would be that maybe someone feels like we're militarizing the, the, the department if we have rifles. I don't buy into that because I know how this is going to be handled. And we've talked, Dr. Nye and I've talked a lot about how we're going to handle that. But if someone did have that perception, that could be a negative outlook into the, into the program. Other than that, it's a little more positive. A favor is, um, but the benefits far outweigh those two things that I see as negatives.
Other questions?
Insurance, is there, you know, certain implications of our insurance or coverage and so forth? Does this, this lower, does it raise it, what happens?
That's a great question, and I don't know.
Donna, they jump? Are there provisions for the other, um, campus, um, centers, other sites?
As far as having the rifle on campus, um, no, there, there are not. We are not there, so to have it there with us not being there, I don't see as practical. We could certainly respond from here to there if we needed to. But there's no provision to have it on the campus in a great way.
Is there somebody in the car all the time driving around campus?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody's always driving around, my assumption is that you could be somewhere maybe within even a minute or ninety seconds, very quick response time. I realize we're basically in the city and I know the city police would respond and the sheriff and the state police, but obviously it would take the sheriff and state police considerably longer.
Our response time would, would be a lot quicker because of that. If you think about the, the call to nine-one-one, the dispatch, getting ahold of the officer, having him find us. We're here already, we may even be hearing what's going on and not even need that nine-one-one call. Now we've just cut out five, six, seven minutes of response time by being here. That's why it's a very important thing to have.
And to just take it back up, what, uh, Chief McGrath was saying is the, the deployment of the tool of a rifle automatically changes your tactics as well. Because it's so much for, has a higher efficacy. And then you can be further away, um, you're not using tactics always and responding from a different angle and taking precious time. You're deploying directly to a threat versus, you know, going against the, a rifle wielding opponent or something and you're automatically disadvantaged, the point is the overwhelm, of course, of course. And it, it provides that tool and decreases that response time as well, just on its face, but that's.
George, do you have a question?
I was, I was thinking with the car, I was thinking certain parts of campus, you can respond to Ollak River and running over here to Almack. Safe and then went to that part of campus, but ours didn't respond to Park River.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the positive, that learning model is we have options.
Do you have to follow up? I just want to follow up on Donna, so how do we address campus safety for other campuses, the local candidate, Newark and Victor and Geneva?
So the Newark, Newark Police Department, uh, Wayne County responded to Newark. It's the closest power concept, although they would be the ones getting there first. Victor would be the Antara County Sheriff's Office and/or the state troopers, and it would be the same for the main campus. And, uh, Geneva would be the Geneva Police Department, Sheriff, or Trooper. So they go by the closest power bands, so they would get the call, be there first.
But we outsource officers to be in those locations, don't we?
We do not. We, we, we do respond to their needs in terms of they have a security issue or question or problem. I go there once a month myself, I mean, but we have, uh, security temporarily, but security maybe in the evening in some of the locations, but not in all of them.
And the security, they're not there during the day either?
They're not always there during the day, yeah.
Thank you.
Other question. Our students, their perspective or thought?
Personally, I think this is a really good implementation, especially all the scenarios that have been presented in the society for many years. You have to meet a threat with same threat, and I don't find a lot of quicker response times in the news. You know, I just said, five minutes is a very long time. And we are a small campus, and I think that's good.
We learned yesterday that these, most of these shooting events that have happened, we learned this from the Secret Service yesterday, are over in ten or eleven minutes, I never. So if the response time is seven minutes or nine minutes, it's a lot of time. I agree with you.
Mr. Redd, anything finally you want to share with us?
Well, I just want to thank you for your time and and your patience in listening to our proposal. And if there's any more questions, please let me know through Dr. Nye, or if there's anything I can do to answer your questions. I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome back, Ken. Up to the podium for some resolutions and some informational items, looks like.
You can do a great prepared.
Yeah, the sprinkler, it's a relatively low-cost sprinkler in dual. I'm sorry, resolution for sprinkler backflow inspection.
We'll do that at the full meeting.
Okay. And the other two items, there's a Bitten, you know, for mail courier services, that's paid at thirty thousand dollars, but that is for that's just a rollover of the annual, but we're actually operating at significantly below that. That's for a five-day a week of service, and I think we're in two days in terms of delivery services. So that's just a simple rollover. The amount is greater than what we're actually funding that, which is much less due to and the other is a budget transfer report that's, like, the request that Kathy, her who wants to try a different piece of equipment, she wants to, to a larger piece of equipment or handle a smell as a regular revenue, using a blade on a smaller piece of equipment that's transferred going to two bunches.
Thanks, Ken. Your ten o'clock motion for adjournment. I'm moving. That's rich. Thank you. Oh, paper.
Always quarter to six, unless somebody needs a break, can we just continue or would you like a break? Can? Five minutes? Okay, we'll do five minutes. See you all then.
Okay. But I did have a question, shoot. I didn't have anything, but it's sorry, thanks for the questions.
I'm hearing that. For order this evening, the December seventh meeting of the Board of Trustees of FLCC. Our first order of business will be to ask if there's any community input, if someone wishes either virtually or here in stage fourteen wishes to address the board, this is your opportunity to do so. All right, seen no one, I will move on. The first order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes and resolutions with the consent agenda. And just want to go over this real quick. And if there are no comments or questions, I will ask for someone to move to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Cushman second, trustee Castles, all in favor, all opposed? Thank you. All businesses, anybody that is.
I just, for public, we did consent agenda, but that one resolution is not.
Isn't that, this is the first grade, right, great. I checked to make sure that it wasn't on. Dr. Nye is referring to the arming of the security people with the rifles, but this was not on the consent agenda. It will be on next month. Okay, new business, or all businesses, anyone have any, this is they'd like to bring the board aboard? Okay. New business. No, new business. Okay. Chairs report. I am getting these trustee magazines from Dr. Nye. They're very interesting. I put them somewhere in my house at my kitchen table where I remember to bring them tonight because I have passed them out before and said to certain people on committees, this is a good field, but obviously I forgot it tonight. But I will bring them the next time. I have them labeled on the front. Some of the ones I thought might be of interest, and then you can pass them around. I would also like to take this opportunity with the chairs report to thank Santa for sending us that email on Kissimmee College. This is very coincidental with the fact that Rod had just recently sent us the one on Binghamton University and perhaps consolidation down there. This is something we have been talking about for a long time, and it looks like it's beginning to happen. It's, it's very sad to see a college that's in existence for two hundred years have to close down. However, we have all been aware of the fact that we are dropping enrollment and how we can best position ourselves to weather this storm, which will be a fairly lengthy. So I just, I just wanted to thank you for bringing that up because it just fit in with the rest. And that's, that's all I have. Dr. Nye?
I'm going to highlight some things briefly. First off, not my report, but I sent for the cabinet, we have a thought starter we do on the weekly cabinet meetings, Summer Deep, Summer Humor. And there's an article I just realized when trustee guys was talking. And it was a presentation that Dr. Aaron Levine gave at the ACCC conference on the five realities of education in the future. I want to make sure I send that to you because it's very thoughtful and sobering, but thoughtful in terms of what the realities are and what some of the ways we might want to be thinking. The searches continue for senior leadership. The thank you to Dr. Arbatas for the work with the Vice President of Administration Finance. We have one more candidate to meet with before we go into decision mode, that'll be next week. You know, we have the challenge of SUNY Online going away, and one of the reasons that two new positions were created is going to support that, one of those positions directly. It wasn't originally intended to be that way. It's supposed to be to support all of our students who chat thought. But one of those positions would be used to support SUNY Online originally and try to get one of the folks that was one of our SUNY Online concierge, counselor advisors for our SUNY Online students who have to live in Pittsburgh and is very effective. And so that's why we want to move that quickly for at least one of those positions. And then second, I am at least more than hopeful. I'm thankful that we have Ryan McKay, who's working on finding us another OPM online program manager to help fill the gaps in terms of how we can reach out to folks across the nation and elsewhere, to be able to find other markets, if you need to find other markets, do things. So I just want to highlight that. I think that's important. It's important, if you look at my report, there's one thing we didn't talk about, and we talked about the long rifles today. And it really was highlighted yesterday. Thankfully, thank you for Matt McGrath for helping get the Secret Service session here on our campus. And it's what you were talking, we heard from Sarah, I started Sarah Whitten a little bit earlier. We also need to be diligent in the activities before you have an event in terms of really connecting the dots and looking at things. And I just put on what our summary statistics were for the use of one of our systems that takes care of this type of activity, Starfish. You've heard about that, but we should see it and look at it. There is a lot of effort that's going into trying to reach these students and to help them, but we need staff. And that's one of the reasons that I wanted to highlight those two together, just to let you know. It's that time of year, we're going to be looking for some big grants coming through. There's a large nursing grant that we're looking at, and also Title III will be coming up, the staff will be working on. And that also, if you get a Title III helps in terms of grants to provide resources that are there to provide better opportunities for students to succeed. So we're going to reach and aspire to that. Also want to thank Carol, Dr. Bates, and all the staff and faculty, not just from the enrollment staff, with the open house recently. Hundred and fourteen tenths of students are almost back to normal completely, and two hundred and seventy-one total guests that came to an open, open house. Many of you have been to them before. When you see the next one, I invite you to come. They're very useful. And thank you to all the staff and all the faculty that supported it on the Saturday to do that. And I also want to highlight our students. The Williams volleyball team again, plays seventh nationally. And what you might not have heard about is we have students that competed last week and this week in nationals in our esports competition, six different, three different teams and three different individual students competing in that. That's pretty useful. So it's really good. And with that, I just want to leave you all to reminder tomorrow at four o'clock to six o'clock is an open house at Star Sider to celebrate holidays. And then our special donor holiday appreciation celebration on December fourteenth. Another thing of getting back normal, where we had that here in stage fourteen, and we're not doing it on weekends, so that you can find us a nice time.
It's Star Sider, is it what time?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock this week.
Competitors can meet. Or six.
Four to six.
You can come. We have, we have. But we also support safe driving. And that's my report. Chairperson, guys.
All right, let's get to some committee reports. First trustee report, trustee Schumacher.
Uh, yeah, so Veterans Week was super successful and a huge turnout online and in person, and the Veterans Day Ball actually sold out of tickets. And it was a wonderful event, and our veterans ceremony, we had veterans in attendance. It was wonderful. And Dr. Nye spoke and a few other keynote speakers. It was wonderful. And then I'm just going to jump, jump down to the bottom. The past few weeks, Student Corporation has been handing out hundreds of World bracelets to raise awareness about suicide and mental health prevention. And it's a super stressful time this semester right now, and the students felt like they were being heard, and they loved talking to Active Minds, Student Corporation about their concerns, and we've been keeping track of them, and maybe we can work with Sarah to talk about those needs. But we still have more bracelets to hand out, more students to talk to, so we're preparing that right now. And then lastly, this was really impactful, FLCC chapter of Active Minds and the Student Veterans Association teamed up with Sun Silence Packing. And it was a big display of backpacks, and essentially each backpack had a story about a student or a military member, someone that lost their life to suicide. And either a boyfriend, a friend, a family member wrote the story about them, and it was very impactful. We had two hundred and fifty faculty, staff, and students walk through and are engaged actively with the display. Five hundred resources were handed out to students about campus, community, and online mental health services. And lastly, I just found this out, that it was the last stop for Sun Silence Packing out of reporting campus tour for the next year and a half. And Jenny also told me that this was two years of planning, and we also have drone footage of the event. I have a flash drive, but there's also a link on there. I don't know if we can pull it up. I would love for you guys to see it. But oh yeah, I can do a flash drive. That's easier.
Just got a flash drive, of course. I do have a flash drive, but I've never used it. I have it just in case.
I have.
I have. Do you have one?
I have three of them.
And you, so you probably.
And this is the drone footage out front of the display. No, there's no audio for it.
Don't get ahead.
Well, we're on backpacks.
Yeah.
And the other backpacks that were given out?
Uh, those were the backpacks with stories of friends and family members and military members that lost their life to suicide. Each one had story on it, and then under the tents, they also had audio stories.
That's a pretty impressive slide.
Yeah, and it is. We were truly blessed of what they, beautiful day is the last, nice sunny warm day up here.
Yeah, I'm happy to share that with you guys. It's a it was very heartbreaking. So three of them, I only got through a few of them. It was very hard, but it opened up, you know, the conversation to a lot of students, and it was shocking but expected how many resources we handed out, and Sarah took note of that in our mental health services, and I'm happy to give the students an opportunity to reach out to us.
That would be an appropriate presentation for the board supervisors in the near future. February, maybe.
Yeah, I agree.
As long as you're coming to Nary.
I'm always impressed with how, what our students do here. It's just, it's just amazing. It's just amazing. And this was, this had to be a hard thing.
It was really hard, and I was sitting in the conservation lounge all day watching people go through, and then at the end of the day, I did, and it was heartbreaking. But it, it helps with the mental health stigma and especially with the faculty. We had a lot of faculty interact out there.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. That's very inspiring. Audit?
Yeah, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, kind of was back in time, but essentially it was the kickoff meeting with Bonadilla where they comment and lay out how they're going to proceed to do the upcoming audit. So we kind of laid all that groundwork and Ken was there, so it was just a good basic understanding of what's going to happen and who's responsible for what.
Any questions for Jeff and me?
I want to make a comment.
Ken, go ahead.
I talked with the auditors today about the single audit versus the double audit, which is a question they have. And it was unclear to me whether or not that was something that had been brought to the board or not. So I'm only raising this, and we're not going to decide that tonight. I only raise this because it needs to be put on our agenda for the next board meeting. We decided that's the goal in that direction of guest. We talked about the presentation and there's a couple of options. I just don't know who's receiving.
Any questions? All right, board development. Donna, Santa.
Still working on getting together so that we can then have a full committee meeting. Hopefully, we won't get that going in January. I don't want to speak for Santa.
No, I can't hear you.
I didn't want to speak for Santa.
All right, Dan, Barbara's in here. Do you have the association?
Yep, the red report is in fact.
Okay, anybody want, any comments or questions? Okay, foundation, I do not have anything. We've already mentioned the party. Louis, is there anything you should know? do not have anything. We've already mentioned the party. Louis, is there anything you should know?
No, we're, I'm not for being a VP figures in trouble against those.
And remember, you got to give them quick. Go quick. Um, Dan, do you have anything from NYCCT? Just want to let you know the newsletter that is currently being edited will be out soon, so take a look at that. And I wanted to thank George for his participation. He's joined the Government Relations and Advocacy Committee, which has been doing wonderful things and there should be a summary of that in the newsletter, but George, if you want to add anything.
It's a lot of learning for me, that's, that's for sure. But I think what's, the one thing that I think is really exciting about that committee is that we're working with the Association of the Presidents and I can't, and we're just started doing some stuff with the and by the way, I think that's the first time that that's happened in any of this memory where we've got together and leverage resources together, presidents and the trustees going forward to for government.
For advocacy, kind of been in the works for about two years and we've finally pulled it off.
So that, that's very exciting and it's the other, we've been working with the Continuing Education Association, you know. And, and just getting a sense of their issues and their needs as, as relates to the six million that's being led with by the and advocacy right now. With the government and how the six million for continuing education, how that workforce, that would be made guided in some ways and how the message will so.
But you know, I think the advocacy is going to get tougher. I noticed this week, they interviewed somebody else from Rockport that was talking about getting more state money, et cetera. So the four years now are really wrapping up to really go after the state too. So we have, NYCCT has hired a consultant that will lobby for us and the, at the state level in particular, but also working with the presidents, the presidents have also, we were going to have a joint group, but he needed to have separate contracts. So we'll be working in conjunction with presidents and also with SUNY. We want to remain in SUNY's good graces. But we want to have a voice there and reaching out to the variety of organizations across the state and then when we have the opportunity to go forward and deal with this at federal level as well. So Andreas is who works for Monroe Community College. Sorry, Andreas.
I missed my hearing and I didn't realize you have a cold or something.
And I know Rob has spoken to him. He's very familiar with community colleges and I think will make a great advocate. He's gotten off to, I think, a very good start.
Yes, does he get questions?
So we have plans in the works to send a welcome to the new chancellor who's been announced and maybe we should hop right on and invite him to come out here. We're the first ones.
We can make a.
Might as well, does it FLCC before this is anywhere else.
We're the only one with a wiener.
Yes. Tell them we will be able to treat him to an exquisite gourmet dinner with our student produced wines. How could you turn that down? Really? You know, to test that out. Very good, very good. George, student corp.
Student corp is in the November meeting, it's the November, December meeting was yesterday. It's just coming meetings all. But the only thing outside what's in the packet already is this was the last meeting this semester. Some, some of the trustees are, are the, the directors on the board are moving a lot because of other work and, and I didn't mention the work and other work commitments and things like that. But they had what looks to be a very smooth succession planning and maybe, maybe Jenny and so forth, they're helping them with that, but it very, very smooth transition as they were, they're, they're remarkable. Kudos to those students.
Any other questions, comments, announcements? Would anyone like to make announcements? Okay, seeing no announcements and maybe setting a record for our meeting. I will ask for maturement. So move, trustee. Yes, second. Second, trustee Bushman, all in favor? All opposed, see no acquisition. We are. Thank you very much.
We have two minutes. My knees should be throwing me here. Should be meeting me right out there. If you don't mind, I'd like to introduce you.
Yeah.
She lives here on campus.